You may get rocks at this time and butterflies at this time. And so, sometimes that works out, sometimes it doesn't work out. So, you know, we, it's hard to get butterflies in the winter because when you let that butterfly go, it can't go outside. So, sometimes it will happen. But this is very comparable to what we've done, especially in the past.
I'd say, I think plenty that we spend on these science kids, there's plenty that we spend. It really does a lot of the, and I saw us, you know, getting our kids interested in science, teaching science, the hands on science is definitely the way we need to go. If these kids do that and get our kids excited, instead of just sitting there reading the science stuff, they're actually doing science, it's very important. They're just, I just, they're actually looking back on it.
Are we putting the numbers out to different vendors to make sure that I'm not always going for the cheapest, but I'm not always going for the highest. So, are we putting it out there to make sure that we're staying in a comparable price range with different vendors? Or they might not be a lot of vendors for butterflies, uh, frog legs?
They, uh, they did, there are two deals in special plan, and if you'll notice the letters, uh, these are ones that are compatible with what we have and the direction that we're taking.
That was my question, whether we put the prices out of what we're wanting for these kids to different people that has this sort of stuff, and we stay in comparison, um, prices and stuff. I want to say, while we can say that I agree with you.
Mr. Plante, I'll answer that question too. Moving away from bringing all of the kids, doing some of the work that we're doing this year, these kids will in the long run save us some money because we will actually purchase, like the rock kids, we will actually purchase the rock kids instead of bringing that rock kid every year. We will want those rocks. So, can you, Mr. please answer in that this is comparable to what we have. We'll want to throw away what we got and buy all new, what we, what we are asking the source of questions fills the need of what we have, but will also allow us to be able to better be self-sufficient, much we get out of the, or the grant from this own community system. This is your file that I'd like to read.
I've got one quick question. When we're looking at this, one of the things I like to see is how many kids, how many students is the same thing? I think that's pretty awesome.
Every elementary school.
And I like to see us making, best money, Mr. Old said this is some of the best money we've spent, but the way the world's moving outside is going to be so important, so I'm so glad to see this.
And Mr. Thurman, I'll add, if you, if you, if you remember back last November, at one of our work sessions, I gave the board some information on test boards. Probably more fair, but that was during the election. I, I did that, and if you look back, especially our fifth grade, eighth grade science boards, were all in the green, and in the green means we can get high growth in our, our, our science boards and grades and extra sciences.
We've no more questions. Comments? What's the pleasure, Paul?
I'd like to motion to approve the sole source vendor requisitions of science.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, to approve the sole source vendor requisitions outlined by Mr. Miller. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? As you can see, thank you. Um, David, I believe you have the community's and schools' contract.
I do, sir.
Mr. Chair. Before we get started, you may, I'd like to keep myself and speak myself for the next slide, being in my place. Thanks, sir.
You just don't have to leave the, I mean, no, just, I'm okay. I'll be ready.
Mr. Chairman, would you, we've got the community's and schools' contract. Try to get this as, and contract.
I know that last year we had a discussion about the fees of this contract, and went back to try to see if I could even find whatever this amount had changed. And, and time of merger has been the same, I'm, I'm, how far we go for that, I don't know. I saw, I remember to go back to there, but, with respect, would you wish to approve the contract? Can you continue, you know, throughout the vision, unless you're just waiting to see how it is?
I have a question. Yes, sir. Uh, yes, could, could you answer, since we've been a partner with them, I always forget that all students closing the gap and everything like that, how much have we achieved with this partnership as far as on that? Have you got any numbers showing that on the dropout over closing the gap?
I do not, but I suspect Dr. Harper may be able to, to say something like that.
And I'll, I'll mention, just, just in dropout data, I know you mentioned it's eighty-nine. If you look at dropout data, our dropout data is continuing to, to increase every year over the, you know, the last six, since this, it increases. If you remember last year, our dropout, our graduation rate was at all-time high at eighty-three point three percent. And this year it's one in three again, it's at all-time high of over eighty-five percent. And so, the employment, graduation coaches, what we're working, we're doing, I would say yes. And, you know, there's lots of, you know, we can, we can get lots of data for, for the board on particulars, what it means for, for schools, but in my opinion, and Mr. Plante, you've heard me say this many times through the last week, in, in my humble opinion, the number that matters most is that, is that, is that graduation rate. When we're graduating over eighty-five percent of our students four years, that's a, that's a tremendous accomplishment. So, I think that's the biggest piece of that that shows that our, our relationship with the schools works. Uh, there's lots of intangibles there, and there, that graduation rate increases, that's been substantial.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to respond to it if I'm in order. Uh, I, I think that's a very thoughtful and, and very good, timely question that Mr. Plante has raised, and, and I, I can certainly affirm the fact that Dr. Harper and her team have been working very hard to prepare for the upcoming educational summit on September thirteenth, and that will highlight and profile all of the different indicators that addresses a closing gap, you know, including graduation rates, including integrated performance, I mean, just a very broad and comprehensive overview of how we're performing as a school district. And, uh, and so, while we don't have all that information at this point in time, that information will be forthcoming, which is probably good, prelude to the fact that I'm sure at some point in time, we'll be, we'll have another meeting before the education summit, but certainly want to encourage all the board members and staff, and as well as the community, uh, to come to that education summit, and there you will see the howings, how, how close gap differences are doing here in Cleveland County.
It's true, that's on September thirteenth.
September thirteenth, I believe, that.
At the La Grande Center.
At the La Grande Center, starting at eight-thirty, eight AM.
Ah, registration. And then the program starts at nine, eight.
Somebody told me, Clark, I think I'm the one who told me.
Are there any other serious questions here? Yes, sir.
I'd like to say something just about the, the overall return for our investment in community schools. Um, I was the director for almost two years, two years back, and so, very big budget, how the money's spent, how the money comes in, and for the best part of the money that we get in, we get the communities and schools providing grants all the time. If we aren't in our school, or if it's a school system, if we didn't have communities and schools, we didn't fund them, we would give the grants. And you're talking hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar grants that they're bringing in to Cleveland County, money to be spent on after-school programs, money to be spent on all kinds of the, the things that they do, they improve golf, various sports, uh, in our school, they do numerous activities with our young people in, in the schools. And all of this we get for really a market based on price, because they take this money that we have and use it to go out and get more grants, to get more, uh, things. And another thing that they really help us out in is that, that they do some of the same things that if they weren't there, we'd have to do, and it would probably cost us more money because our pay scale is higher than their pay scale. And it would actually cost us more money to do some of the same things that we have to do, uh, what we need to do, uh, they can do it cheaper because they don't have the benefits and all that that you do for, for the school system. So, it is a tremendous market for the school system and for our county. The fact that we're bringing in outside money because we have this organization out there and funding for these grants, I think we'll look at what these nonprofit groups can do. All you have to do is look over at the American Legion, see what they've done about bringing in all kinds of money to this county, uh, for going out and fundraising and paying your schools, is doing that for us. We owe them a real debt of gratitude.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen communities and school contract in the amount of eighty-six thousand seven hundred dollars of these kids.
I'll say.
Seconded.
Four contractors, one sixty-nine, four of them always paid it as first, first half.
We approved four contracts. We paid it to the, yes.
Okay. I just was quoting what was on the agenda, so. I'd be in that motion to reflect.
Sixty-four. Just draw your motion and make another motion.
All right. I'll withdraw that motion, and I'll make a motion to approve the contract for a hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred one dollars.
Seconded.
Move and second to approve the contract as stated here, a hundred and sixty-nine something thousand. Any other discussion, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? As you can see, thank you. Uh, Fisher, I believe you're going to tell us something about the Moore House and maybe lands, projected plans.
That's great. Okay, this is just information only, does not require any corrections at this point. We'll probably bring this back to you at some point, but just wanted to, uh, you know, I don't like to get too far with the orders, so I'd like to just inform you of some of our discussions. As you know, the Moore House, which is here to my left, to the audience's right, was, has been with the Partnership for Children for a long time. Remember, we own that house a couple of months ago, the board meetings, we discussed about partnership, we can keep some of this center there on Ridge Street, and that's vacated and left the Moore House vacant. Uh, we've had some discussions, there's lights in the back, the director of the community and communities and schools, we've had some discussions about communities and schools coming and occupying that building. Uh, Mr. Yarbo, his team worked on, worked on that building, they've gone in that building to assess on some things, if there are, if there are some repairs that we can do just to update that building, or if anything's there, may not be anything, but his team, it was beginning of school, that, the community schools got the bid for RAR, and RAR going over there, and we get assessment of that building. But, uh, we would, we're, we plan on going in there and assessing, or really looking at it, seeing, you know, the shape there, and then beginning in some discussion between the schools without possibly them occupying that building. I wanted to get the board, all of that information out there. If you have any questions or concerns or thoughts, I'd ask you to give John a call and discuss that. We will bring something back to you if you decide that that's the direction we're going to go. But I did not want that conversation to begin, and you guys not, not, maybe not know that and not be aware of that. So, I said, if you have any questions or discussion, you know, I know John will call, call me if you want, but I just wanted, like I said, as that conversation, and that's why we need to, to discuss that a little bit with her board as well, and talk to that. So, we did not want that conversation going on her board without this board knowledge, and we're just, you know, in the preliminary stages of our negotiation. So, more information.
I'm sure if anybody has any questions right now.
I'd be glad to answer those at this point, if there are any questions. Obviously, uh, you know, we feel like an occupied building is better than vacant building, you know, that vacant building, the second rounds is, you know, are good, but, but, you know, it's very early, and I mean, I'd have to try and ask you questions.
Although, we, you know, an unoccupied vacant building will go down quicker than an occupied building, even if you've got young. But, are we going to be looking at the cost of doing that repairs for us when some out, when an outside firm is doing that?
We, and I can't speak for Mr. Yarbo and his team, but I, I, you know, I wouldn't think, and I've been in that building recently, and, and I'm not sure that it's in need of repairs, needs any repairs, uh, we want to make sure it's still in there, and there may be some things for security purposes, you know, for instance, we may want to, uh, put our new outside blocks on there to do that. There may be some things there just like those that we, that the board, you know, we'll, we'll definitely look at that, and that's, it's really too early, but we've had, Mr. Yarbo and I haven't had a chance to go over there. We've been talking about it, and I went to visit schools for, for all of last week, and, and we had lots of projects going on, so Mr. Yarbo and I haven't had the opportunity to go there, walk through there, and kind of look at that. And, like I said, that, you know, the purpose of this is just to kind of go on forward, just to make sure there's some progress in that, in the early negotiations for that partnership.
One, one, one other point of information is, I know that the director is, the director is present, but I'm just curious, I think it's a feasible idea and proposal, I'm just curious as to whether the facility will be, and how all of the, the staff, the communities and students.
Yeah, our, our initial conversation would be that, that would, that would be, you know, kind of on those steps down the line that we'll, we'll get back, but they're, just if we get too far along.
Next, I'm, Mr. Yarbo, I believe you're going to update us on the road to the light project.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, board members, again, just to, this is, I would stress our last name, just to review that, the town board had requested a front right away, of course, the dogwood drive, the, 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 the school, they need this in order to complete their dogwood drive construction project. Um, if you've noticed, uh, in the agreement, we did add a section that really reserves the right, this board of education, uh, that, uh, in the future could actually relocate that right away, and also the transfer of property ownership if need. Basically, it just gives us flexibility in the future, that if we had to build a construction project in that area of campus, we would have the flag of flexibility to transfer this ownership back to our community council. Uh, basically, of course, it's in about the same position as we're in there, with all the, this right away, this margin. So, any, any questions regarding this project, uh, you know, did talk of, uh, Mayor Edford also talked, worked in DOT, and, you know, I think this is, uh, this situation that really detects the flexibility and rights of the board of education.
I did go look at that, and Mr. Yarbo, it's really a snowblows deal for us, and it's going to be a, a nice road there, and, and we will have the flexibility, if we want to take it back, we can take it back. Uh, but, uh, it's going to make things a lot better right there if they think this, and we got to remember, we're stacking on their property that they can stop before you get to that spot. And, uh, so, if we didn't sort of, actually, work with them a little bit, that should tell us out right there, and we'd have to help, help get those kids across the next street.
Thank you, Mr. Plante. Do you, do you have any other, just all?
Any thoughts? Uh, Mr. Yarbo, for his work on this, I think this is, uh, this, uh, change does relieve my concerns about the right away, and I appreciate, along with that, I think this is a much better agreement than what we had.
If we know through the conference, what's the pleasure, Paul?
I'll make a motion if we're further, I'd like to, for, for, just to, to, I have the, I have.
Mr. Moore, again, all three seconded. Have we approved this?
Yes.
Do you have a say in that? Probably, in, in all. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? As you can see, thank you. John, I believe you have capital projects, or else?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is based our first project in the fourteen, fifteen school year. Uh, do feel that we're in good shape regarding our summer capital projects, uh, we still have a few loose ends to tie up, but, uh, I'm pleased with where we are as far as a day one of, of school. Um, highlight some of those projects for the new bleachers and wood floor system at Crest Middle, that's been installed, but, uh, did speak with, uh, Mr. Smith today at Kings Mountain Middle, and last week they had two sessions of orientation, and, uh, those bleachers came in handy, I think you felt like they had about eighty-five percent of their students represented, uh, representing that, that orientation. So, uh, if you're, uh, stick headed to gym, and, and you look at that, that gym looks different. Uh, floor and work that we did at, uh, North Elementary, which was, uh, adding a rubberized floor to their gym floor, as well as classrooms at Ground East, that carpet replacement, uh, those are complete. Uh, the greenhouse project, uh, that we partnered with CTE at Kings Mountain High School, still got some work to do there, we need that sidewalk, we need to complete their, uh, their irrigation system, and, uh, as well as assemble those, uh, tables for that greenhouse. Uh, Grand Elementary, uh, this summer, we did replace about four hundred foot section of main sewer line from their main, uh, building. Um, basically, this eliminates the original line, which they're called tile, we've been battling roots in that system for, for a while now, so hopefully this new sewer line eliminates those issues there at, at Grand Elementary. Uh, Kings Mountain High School, their quad unit has been set up at some place, we have set at the end of September as a, as a schedule to have that ready for, for students, and I think we're in a position to meet that schedule. Uh, we're still working with Duke Energy to get the, uh, the electrical service in, and we'll do the, uh, underpending and set the ramps and steps. Crest Middle School, the IP phones there have been installed, they're using those, so I think currently they're using both their numbers, but hopefully this Friday we'll convert it to the four-seven-six number, so we, uh, thankful to get that school off our list as far as IP phones. I know Mr. Mo Hiller is still in the process of upgrading the lighting, the lights in the CTE wing, Crest High School, I know the majority of those are in, we've got a few left in there, uh, woodworking and shop area, and we'll work around them to complete that. Uh, P E lockers for Burns Middle School were on order, uh, this project will allow us to replace and refurbish all the lockers and the boys and girls locker room there at Burns Middle School. Uh, I would like to give you an update in regards to Title Nine. Uh, Mr. Fisher, Dr. Fisher informed me that, uh, Dr. Ryan's will be in town end of October to do a final meeting and come in to review our progress in regards to our compliance issues. Uh, we still have two projects that's just coming together pretty nicely, uh, the softball dress carry at Kings Mountain High School, uh, they're in the, uh, stripping instructions in the final stages of, about there today, doing some electrical work, some, some painting. Uh, I know that there's going to be some punch list items that we'll have to address there, but I think we'll, we'll be able to meet that deadline. And then the, uh, female field house, also at Kings Mountain High School, uh, lighting upgrades and painting are almost complete, the lockers are in, we'll still have to do some work in the restrooms, and do some, uh, bathroom, uh, tissue installs, that installation, but we should be in good shape for our, our visit with Mr. Ryan's in the, uh, end of October, and I can, will keep, keep you up to date in regards to that process. Uh, you can see a few safety and security projects, we talk a lot about that, the things that's going on at our schools, but I did want to bring you, make note of one, Chevy Intermedia, we've actually gone on that campus and, and added some security walls and doors that's really tied, they're three separate buildings together. We've actually created a little courtyard area that, uh, thinks is going to, you know, work out well there. I know the administrators there are, are pleased with this project, but if you provide Chevy Media, if I look at that, that's a, had that on the drawing board for a while, we're able to, uh, close to having that, I believe, so we've got a few other things to work on, and, you know, we're constantly looking at our campuses and trying to enhance school safety when we can, you know, we don't share everything out at this public meeting, but, uh, you can see there in the report, there's a number of things that's going on, and I know Dr. Lewis and her team, uh, just have a total team effort on this. Also, one last thing to share with you, Chevy Intermedia, I talked with you in regard to the new drive for the new, uh, health department, you know, their schedule was, they haven't completed, uh, a day one, uh, they're a little behind, but we were able to leave the original drive on the north side of that campus, so, uh, we're, we're, we have access to the front of that school and the car to students drop off and pick up, and we'll be able to use that until their drive is completed. So, uh, by their own, it seems to work well today for the schools. Uh, I can say this, their, their big construction, their great contractor, been great to work with, is, you know, to make sure that the council, Chevy Media, next, to, to.
Any questions, comments? Plante?
Yes, sir. Uh, Burns High School, are they in the Title Nine?
Their products were completed, uh, earlier on in this process.
How does that process up there compare with the other schools' process in, in that Title Nine? I'd like to see that explained, because all, what, what I've seen, I thought it figured this whole battery.
Uh, we, we had a team come in, Fisher, we had the, it's spring two thousand eighteen, two thousand nine, and, uh, it basically, uh, came in and assessed our, our, our high schools, and that committee, uh, gave us a recommendation, a list of non-compliance issues, and that's guided our, our process.
That, in other words, our committee showed that in compliance compared to our, our, the free high schools?
It wasn't our committee. It was the federal.
Federal. Do you mean the federal government? Well, something's wrong with them, I mean, and I, and you can definitely tell them I said so tonight, because they got four bathrooms up there on the visitor's side of the football field, and these other places has got, uh, hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollar worth of buildings, and they got four doors.
And I think, Mr. Plante, if you remember, Title Nine, uh, the Title Nine compliance looks at male sports versus female sports.
Well, you get the baseball field up there.
It does, yeah, and I, I don't think, it doesn't, it doesn't look at, uh, if you have, uh, and, and this was, the way it was explained to me, because I remember when they came, I, I, I argued some of the same points that, that you argued.
Well, I'm not supposed to yawn, you know, you take them.
I understand, uh, but, but the way it was applied to me is, is you can have bad facilities, as long as you have bad facilities for both the boys and the girls, uh, that, that's fine, but it's the difference between, and we, we received a list of, of, of Title Nine, you must do this, you must do this, and those are the things that we.
But, but us as a school system, should we allow that to take place to Burns versus Crest and Shelby and, uh, Kings Mountain? That way, I'm scared if Washington DC or China says, and put that on record, I said, and you can have, uh, and I'm not pressing to catch your offer, or if you think it warrants what we've done, but Burns High School would have been left out compared to the other schools.
We, we have a list of all schools that had to comply, we, we've gone through that list, and as we go through that list, you know, there, there will be some opportunities for, for additional other projects, but I know we, we were under a timeframe with Phil Grumman to, to make sure we comply with these things, and Mr. Ryan's coming, I believe, in, in some time or two.
Well, I'd like to have a meeting with Mr. Ryan, and I'd like to have a copy of that list, and if any of you board members wants to come on with me, we'll go, we'll go around the schools, and we'll have a meeting with them as a board.
At least, Mr. Plante, if I may, um, I, I'd like to say that, um, I don't know if you've been to Crest, Bathurst, you know, Kings Mountain, I mean, all of them need improvement. Um, you know, some, you talk about the visitor's side.
But they got that.
Well, I mean, Crest and Burns are pretty identical, when you think about it.
Not when it comes to that, not when it comes to what Title Nine's done, nowhere in comparison.
Improvement seem to be made in all of them, what I'm saying here.
And our, and we've got a danger and a safety situation at Burns and at Crest on these , uh, press boxes. Uh, I don't know if Mr. Glover, you might have been there and seen some of these steps that's going up in there, uh, that right there is an issue that really makes you feel like that.
We'll get, uh, we'll, we'll get to all of the members, I know it's a bill filed, but, uh, Mr. Yarbo reminded me, we'll, we'll work tomorrow, get, uh, resend board members a copy of that Title Nine compliance report, just so you familiarize yourself with it.
On or down on that?
Mr. Yarbo, I've got a question about Kings Mountain, there's a expensive relocating quad, and then there's a line out for a quad unit, that, that we can move one and buy one?
The, the one there is to purchase, and then the other line is to.
The one there is to purchase and then the other line is being right down.
Re-located?
And set up.
Okay.
Any other questions? Next item of business, student transfer request, so of all that, please, front of you, what's the pleasure you want?
I would like to approve the student transfer request, recommend.
Is it moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second to approve student transfer requests. We'll get it on our agenda, any discussion?
I just have a question, I'm okay with this, and I know that on our report, you always put the class size to pay. We have now transferred, some of the rate limits are getting pretty high and then our elementary schools higher than our general in recent past. Will we plus the, add the inter-classes or?
Not where we approve the transfers. We approve the transfer, I know that we recommend that, Ms. Lombr, I remember that in my days, years ago, that personnel director come down there and let you know where the class size are. Those regents will let you know too. So not where we, if those, if any transfers approved cause of class size, we were very comfortable with that. Now, I'm saying there's some places where we may not have to add a feature, you know, looking at class size, that would not be a cause of transfers.
Just refresh and reiterate what the class size limits are at the elementary level?
It's, there's a, that's to be a district average of twenty-one, K three and cannot let you go over twenty-five, is that correct?
It's a little different for each.
Right.
Kindergarten's a little different. Yeah.
But I believe it's kindergarten is, you cannot exceed twenty-five in a class, no matter what your district average is, you cannot have over twenty-five. And then grades one through three, your district average goes up a little bit, but you can't exceed that. And then after fourth grade, it's really different.
Fourth grade, what is that?
Any other questions?
I'd like to say one thing, I appreciate Dr. Huddle's hard work that he's done. I think this is the first time that we haven't had any transfer periods. And I think that contributes to his hard work and his faculty has. And also, you know, you hear rumors about the athletic part of transfers and I've had discussions with him. I've been, you know, I know he has worked hard and does a lot of business out here to make sure, correct me if I'm wrong, to make sure that we follow our policy on transfers and make sure that that's done properly. Thank you.
Other comments? If not, all in favor, motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As you unanimously. Now, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed personnel session, personnel discussion pursuant to appropriate general statute.
I make a motion that we go into the first session. I don't have the general statute in my name, so if you approve this.
I don't either, but I think you can be gotten wherever it is. It doesn't, really, I'm turning to sit, really, it makes a whole lot different, but I think appropriate general statute.
Actually, right here it is, just in case, one four three three one eight dot eleven subsection eight six.
Thank you. That will forever be in our view. I probably. Your second, thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As you.